I'm going to ask that our chiefs, our attorneys, and any chairperson that's on the agenda to please come and take a seat here. Is anyone representing the police department in our midst? Okay. We have an exciting meeting planned for this evening. And we're going to wait for some of our champions to come. Can someone escort them to these first five rows here? Applaud people for our champions coming in. Some of them are champions and some of them are baseball players. Let's recognize our young people. Come on in, parents. We should have reserved seating for you as well up here. We love you so much that we made you, we have reserved seating for you because that's how important you are to us. Come on toward the front. If you're with the baseball teams, come on to the front. And once they're settled, I'll call the meeting to order. Such an exciting time, such an exciting time. Give them a hand, give them another hand. Welcome there. Not only do they take time out during the week to practice and hone their skills, and the parents are right there with them. They've taken time to come and be with us this evening as well. We thank you. There's still a couple more seats up front. Anyone need to sit? Come on, players, we got seats for you. Are we all, are we prepared and ready? Very good. It is now 7:10, and I would like to call this meeting to order. And I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. ...of the United States of America. And to the Republic, what we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns.
Here.
Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Seth.
Here.
Trustee Sterling.
Present. Thank you for that. We will now have meditation slash prayer. I believe I saw our own pastor time pits in the audience.
If you will, my asking to understand momentarily for prayer. May we stand in our heads in reverence to our Lord and Savior. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for this time. Lord, we thank you for this place. We thank God for each and everyone that is in this room, from our board, each adult, each parent. God bless each and everyone that was able to walk in this building. Lord, I ask that your presence be involved in this room, Lord. Touch each and every individ- respect one another, reference one another, and love one another as you have loved us. So, Lord, this is my prayer for Salt Village, that we get things done, that we come together as you would have us to do. This is how I'm praying, this is how God is leading me to pray. So I ask each and everyone in the room to be respectful, to love one another, and live in peace. This is my prayer. I pray in the matchless name of Jesus, may we all say amen.
Amen.
God bless you, you may be seated.
Even though we have very special guests among us, I am going to still endeavor to move forward with the agenda as presented just so that our young people can gain some experience on how board operations are conducted. I think that this is a wonderful lesson for them as well as I also think that I would love to see many of them sitting up here when we have Student Government Day. So they're getting an opportunity. And I am going to ask each one of you to silence your devices. And the person who has mine, I'm going to ask you to silence mine as well. So let's move on. We're not going to go into closed session. We would definitely not do that to you guys today. But we are going to bring forth now our village clerk as we entertain approval of minutes.
We have a number of minutes to approve today because we haven't met the last two board meetings. So I'm going to read off the minutes that will be approved tonight in the order that they will be approved. Starting with the approval of the Journal of Proceedings for the May 6th, 2025 Committee Meeting at the Hall. I'm asking for approval of the Journal of Proceedings for the May 13th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. If you see on the agenda that there are executive session minutes to be approved, we will not be approving those tonight because we need to go in executive session to review those before they can be approved. And we're not going in executive session today. So I'm asking that we do not call for a motion to approve the Journal of Proceedings for the May 13th Executive Session Meetings 1 and 2. We will be asking for approval of the Journal of Proceedings for May 20th, 2025 for the Committee of the Hall Meeting, and also to approve the Journal of Proceedings for the May 27th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, and also for the approval of the Journal of Proceedings for June 3rd, 2025 Committee of the Hall Meeting, and to approve the Journal of Proceedings for the June 10th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. I am asking for all of those to be approved to executive session.
Are you asking for that through common consent or consent agenda, or you want me to call the motion?
Now, if there's no objection to a consent agenda, we can take one vote and approve all of them. That would be agreeable to me.
May I have a motion to approve items A, B, E, F, G, and H?
So moved. Answered.
And, no, C is executive session. A, B, E, F, G, and H. That motion is, again, to approve all of them except for items C and D. May I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson. May I have a second? It's been seconded by trustee Seth. We have a motion on the floor to approve by common consent or consent agenda, all items except for C and D. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, madam clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Seth. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move into public comment. The agenda reads one thing. And for those of you who have not been in our presence before, I am going to let you know that all of your questions are to be directed to the mayor. I'm going to also ask that if you, I'm going to ask that you not single out any one person by name. You may say, "A trustee said," or you may say, "A resident mentioned." But please do not call individuals by name. It sort of puts them on edge. And we have all of these beautiful youngsters here today with their parents, who's never been before us. Okay? And we don't want anyone to get on edge. We don't want them to see us getting on edge. As the pastor prayed, let's have peace, let's love one another. You don't even have to love one another, even though that's what God asked of us. But let's at least respect one another. Okay? Thank you. Yes. Those of you who are standing, there are almost two rows of seats up here on the left side. We're going to ask that you please come and take a seat. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to move forward. And I am going to ask, for the sake of brevity, if you have a public comment, I'm going to ask that you stand in line at the podium, and you may stand and do that now. Anyone that has a public comment, please come to the podium now and form a line. So I see that we have three, maybe four individuals who will be bringing public comment today. If you're not in line, you will not be entertained. Are we clear with that? Are we on one accord with that? Thank you very much, sir. Let's move forward with the first one. Madam Clerk, are you prepared? Give her just a second.
Hi, I'm Francine Anderson. And I want to start my comment by saying that I want to say thank you to the coaches and to the Salt Village Athletic Association and the baseball team. And thank you for representing us well. Thank you to the youth who have been participating in making your grand stand today. And I applaud you for everything that you have done to make this a successful year. I hope that we can continue to encourage you and continue to support you and continue to bring forth some positivity to Salt Village. That's my first comment. The second one is, in the budget review today, we have heard several times that you only had a budget that you're working from, from 2022. And I don't understand why. And the reason why I don't understand why, because I was present when a 2023 budget was offered, when a 2024 budget was offered, and when a 2025 budget was offered. And at that time, we had four trustees that decided that the hearing should not be held, and they would not vote for those particular budgets. So to say that we're going back to the 2022 budget, I would hope that we were preference for those who were not able to make the meetings like I were, that that was the last past budget, but not the last budget presented. Because it does make it seem as if the other administration never presented the budget. And also, those other four trustees presented their own budget to the public. So I don't understand why we keep jumping backwards. The other concern I have, Madam Mayor, is that I'm, I am definitely concerned by hearing from the public, maybe rumored or not, but you are in unemployment of several people that I'm concerned about. And I don't know if they're interested or if they can get into our public records. But one is the wife of trustee Seth, who is Henrietta Favors, who is now an employee.
I asked, stop, stop. Calm down. Excuse me. I specifically stated that we will not name names. Were you here when I said that? Do not call names.
Okay, well then, let me rephrase my question then. Is there a possibility that you can explain to us why is it that people who have mates that are actively members of our board that are now current employees? And you can let us know who those names and initials are. But since I can't name names, maybe I should do initials so we can make sure that you got the right people? Oh, no. Excuse me, madam. I would also expect some respect. I, okay. Can I have my other few minutes back? Thank you. Well, in my five seconds, I would like to know why is trustee Williams, who is a clerk now, participated in the budget as if she was a trustee?
People, let's please be obedient. I know, let's be obedient. And I'm going to say that, I'm going to say that public comment ends, I believe that's Mr. Fields. He was the last one in line.
Mr. Smith.
Is it Smith?
Mr. Smith is the last person that was in line. No one was after him. No one came after him. We had already closed the line down.
That's okay. I'm going to deal with the lawsuit. That's okay. Let's move forward.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Kim Mack. I've been a resident here for 18 years. And the only concern that I have, I just got it signed, is the potholes, the potholes that's in front of my house. I've been addressing it every single year. And every single year, I get the same answer, oh, they're going to get to your block. They just come by and just throw some tar there. Right now, it's a big gaping hole there. And we hear cars hitting that pothole all night, full and full. So that's my question. I just want to know what's in the budget as far as fixing 219 Place.
Rather than me waiting until we conclude, may I just quickly ask that you don't give us your address, but give me your street name and the hundred.
Yeah, 219.
219?
That's it, 219 Place.
219th and?
219 Place.
The entire? All the way down?
Or is there another? We got potholes up and down that whole street.
Thank you very much.
That's my concern. My name is Kim Mack, M-A-C-K.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next in line, please.
I want to bring up a concern about the-
I'm sorry, please state your name.
Michael Waldberg. I'm sorry, I didn't want to do that, but that's all right. About the vehicle stickers being due by, and I say that word heavily, by July 1st. I paid mine on July 1st, and I got fined for $30 for being late. Now, the way I see by July 1st is 11:59 of that day is legally on time.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That's it?
I'll respond when our-
Okay, yeah. I just- One of the reasons I'm saying that is because we have green signs as we come to the village all over the place, and it says, hold on a second.
By July 1st?
Yes, by July 1st, yes. So you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir, and I'm going to explain it when we're finished with our line.
Okay.
Do you have anything else you would like to say to us today?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Next one in line, please.
Name's Robert Simpson.
I'm sorry?
Robert Simpson. Mine's more in the shape of a question than the person I really want to ask it to is the chief, please. But being as we have signs all over the place stating that fireworks are illegal, what is being done about the proliferation of them? Now, I understand we have a limited-sized police force. And I kind of understand on the 4th of July, they're going to be fired off. But they're still being fired off every day. The 4th of July, that went on till 2 o'clock in the morning. What are we doing? If we're going to put these stupid signs up that say there's a fine or arrest, why aren't they fining or arresting people?
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Is there anything they can do about it, or?
I have it recorded. I'll go respond when I respond after the last person has spoken.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Next in line, please.
David Smith, resident. Let me know when you're ready. All right, first, congrats to the baseball team. Got to get that out the way. Now for the tough stuff. Has anybody got an audit update? Specifically with 2021? Because that was the last update that we got from Baker Tilly. Has anybody talked to the comptroller and gotten any sort of update about where we were? Because the last we all heard, we were in noncompliance. And I believe we had an end of August date to get some things done. So has anybody gotten an update specifically from the comptroller? Uh, next, water bill updates. Lot of people coming and asking me, you know, what's up with the water bills? Congrats, let me say something else positive. Congrats, you guys fixed the dates. But I'm being told everybody, a lot of people's bills are higher than what they were before. So, you know, I know me, I'd rather had you fix the total first and did the dates last. And so would the rest of the people who've been asking me about it. So what's going on with the water bills? Why is everybody reporting that they're getting higher than usual water bills? Second to last thing, village website. Where are we at with that? I believe Vidity was already paid off. You guys paid them a couple thousand dollars. I know you were withholding payments for a while, for what? I have no clue. But when are we going to get an updated village website? Because they still got the old administration up there. And that should be really the easiest thing you have to do. Nothing to update a few pictures and put some text up there of like, that should be simple. I know you guys got a zillion problems to fix, but that should be pretty easy. Where are we at with that? Finally, because I asked these questions last week, I told you I'd be back to ask them again. Juneteenth. Who authorized a private resident to collect funds on behalf of the village? I put in the foyer request, I'm not going to say the sensitive, edgy resident's name. But at the end of the day, why am I now being told through foyer that you guys have no records of all of the financial transactions from that Juneteenth event? Why is that? Do all of the donors know that the money has now been sent not to the village? Because if it was sent to the village, you guys should have a record of it. That all of that money was sent to a trustee and her husband? Do all of the people who were vendors that paid money not just to them, but also to the clerk, who I would assume forwarded that money to a certain trustee's husband, know that their money didn't end up in the village? Because if it did, I would hope to assume you guys would have a record. But seeing as how my foyer request says that you don't, I'm just left to assume that all of that money ended up with a certain trustee and her sensitive husband.
Anything else, sir?
Yes. I want to notify you all that the Attorney General's office is now involved in this. And I would just advise that everybody, specifically that trustee and her sensitive husband, get their records together.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, before you get started, may I ask that before this evening concludes that you communicate with me? I have something that I need to share with you. Okay?
David Fields. Good evening, Madam Mayor, board of trustees. Madam Mayor, we have a problem over on Jeffrey between 217th to 219th. It's a speed bump over there, right? That's not a speed bump. Them cars fly right over that thing. And then they fly down Jeffrey all the way down to 215th. It's kids that be playing out there on Jeffrey, basketball and carrying on. And those cars are flying down that street. Something got to be done before one of these kids wound up getting hurt. Not somebody playing down that street. If it takes more speed bumps or larger speed bumps, because I see cars just go over that speed bump like it's not even there. So either it need to be a larger speed bump or it need to be speed bumps alone in Jeffrey. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And I am going, I'm going to piggyback on what Mr. Fields just talked about in terms of speed bumps. Because a resident brought to me a petition to install speed bumps on 221st Street from Salt Trail to Orient. And they have at least, I would say, 25 or 30 signatures. And so I am going to ask our staff to heed what Mr. Fields talked about relative to the speed bumps as well as this petition and that we respond to them as expediently as possible. Going back, most items were not questions, but for those who asked questions. In terms of why we stated that we don't have a budget since 2022, for whatever reason, if it wasn't passed, it wasn't enacted. And if it wasn't enacted, then we had to create an ordinance stating that we would operate on the last passed ordinance, that standard procedure. And that is what we took, that took place. In terms of the potholes on 219th Place, I'm hoping that staff has recorded that already. And that's going to be looked at and taken into consideration as well. Where the village stickers are concerned, if something says by or on, I mean, or before July 1st, I'm talking about the stickers now, then that would mean at 11:59 PM on June 30th, that's the last opportunity that you have to meet a deadline for July 1st. Because when the clock ticks, one minute pass, 11:59, then it becomes July 1st. That's the logic, and that has been operational. I've been here since 2007. It's been in the ordinance on the books much longer than that. So we will not change that. All I can do is appeal to everyone, don't let 11:59 strike if you want a discount on your village sticker. Fireworks that are illegal, I'm hoping that someone will be bringing the police chief's report because I specifically asked for an update on what and how we handled the fireworks. because I specifically asked for an update on what and how we handled the fireworks. We also requested another officer be on duty that day to handle illegal fireworks. So I would, I am very interested in knowing the outcome of that. Audit update, comptroller update, water bill update, high water bills. To that, I am going to ask the village administrator to be able to respond to that and to do so under your report, not right now. In terms of the village website update, up to this point, no one in Village Hall has access to the website still. But glory, I believe two of us are taking training tomorrow at- It's three of us, tomorrow at 3 o'clock. So we will gain access and we will begin updating the website after we have the training and the knowledge of how to do so. The Juneteenth funds. All I can say to that is I have no accounting of those funds. I will ask the individuals who were involved with the planning and the collecting of those funds to give us a report. Not today, I would like a written report so you would have time. And I think that I addressed all of the questions and the major concerns. Thank you very much. And I am going to ask your diligence, because we are moving a little bit long for our youth that's in the audience. So I am going to ask very graciously if we cannot amend the agenda at this point so that we can replace items 5, 6, 7, and move directly into the reports of the officers. Is that okay with everyone? I'm asking for a motion to amend. Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any objections or any comments? Hearing none, then we're going to move on. And I'm going to give the mayor's report. And the first part of the mayor's report, and I'm going to ask our village clerk to assist me with this by holding up a proclamation that we have for Commander Jack Evans III, who's not with us today, right now, simply because he's dealing with a family emergency. However, he is retiring, and his last day of service for the Village of Salt Village will be this coming Friday. And that's why we're going to proceed on with offering him the proclamation. And know that we bought him a gift, but since I heard that he wouldn't be here, I didn't bring the gift out. But that gift, I promise you, is not a clock, because if you're retiring, why do you really want a clock? No, I take that back, because it is a clock, it's a watch. But it's something that he can carry with him all day, every day, and it's a beautiful watch, take my word for it. But let me read this proclamation to Commander Jack Evans III. Whereas Jack Evans III began his career with the Salt Village Police Department in July of 1998, and whereas after the completion of Cook County Sheriff's Basic Law Enforcement Academy classes and a detailed field training program, Officer Evans began working as a patrol officer, working both afternoon and midnight shifts. And I'm gonna pause for a second, and I'm going to ask any of our police officers and firefighters that's within our midst to please stand as I continue reading this proclamation. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Remain standing, and I shall continue. Whereas in addition to his usual patrol assignment, Officer Evans joined the South Suburban Emergency Response Team, which is a tactical response team for several committees, communities throughout the suburbs. And whereas Officer Evans continued to receive many, many hours of specialty training in order to become a trained SWAT officer, gang specialist, and narcotics officer. And whereas due his technical, technical, tactical experience and training, Officer Evans became one of the department's two rapid-response instructors and was responsible for training the entire department on rapid-response and techniques. And whereas on September the 2nd, 2002, Officer Evans was promoted to the rank of sergeant, where he received many more hours of specialty training in advanced areas of law, supervision, management, leadership, with such esteemed organizations like FEMA, LEEDs, and MEMRT, just to name a few. And whereas due to his exemplary commitment to the community and his continued dedication to serve in times of crisis, Sergeant Evans was promoted to detective prior to being promoted to commander on August 9th, 2021. Now therefore, the mayor and board of trustees of the Village of Salt Village do hereby proclaim their heartfelt gratitude and wish him all the best in this new retirement chapter of his life, dated this 8th day of July, 2020. By Mayor Margaret Campbell Pruitt and village clerk Debbie L. Williams. Let's hear it for Evans. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Now, that was wonderful to do. But the next one is so special as well. And I'm going to ask, is Coach George with us? Or any of the other coaches? I'm gonna ask all of the coaches for all of our teams to come forward. All of our coaches, can you please come forward and just take a stand in front of me? Because we have five baseball teams here. Three of them are champions. But we wanted our youngest of the young to be here as well, so they could witness how we love on our champions, and they too can aspire, aspire to follow in their footsteps and continue on with our baseball teams. The men that's standing to my left and to some of your right, they do not all live here in the village. Some of them travel to be here. And they're here five or six days a week with our young men. May I ask that, please?
I personally would like to thank all of these men that come out and donate their time. Nobody up here gets paid. Everybody comes out here and give 100%. We start at the end of January working out. And it's a grind. And these guys come and give, you know, give themselves to help our program. And I want to thank them personally. I'm George Green. To my left, this is Mr. Earl Doris. Jermaine Harrison. Lorenzo Mitchell. Calvin Haney is president of the organization. Mr. Mike Boyd. That's Andrew Boyd. Adrian Stuckey. And last but not least, Mr. Troy Williams. Y'all are cute, man, I'm horrible with them. I don't learn, I don't learn the name of my kids sitting in the season. It's just, hey, come here. All right, do we have any tee ballers? Where are tee ballers? Our tee ballers, come up tee ballers. Our tee ballers are from age 4 to 6. Age 4 to 6. Now, come over here. Yeah, we had, we had two, we had two tee ball teams. One of the other tee ball coaches on the road traveling, he's, he's on his way back. The, uh, we had 20, we had a total of about 21 tee ballers. Our next team would be the pentos. Our pentos are seven, eight-year-olds. Look like Denny and Al, our pentos make it. So, our next team would be- Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. The next group were the pentos. We, any of our pentos make it. But we had 10, we had 10 pentos. Those are seven and eight-year-olds. Our next group is our champions, the Mustangs. The Mustangs, these kids show up. All the Mustangs, come up. All the Mustangs, come up. That's the Bronco. That's the Broncos. Yeah, we had a total of 14. We had a total of 14 Broncos, I mean, uh, Pent, uh, Mustangs. We had a total of 14 Mustangs. And these, these kids, these kids started last year. They won the, uh, they won the pento division last year. And the reason why they win, because they all show up. They're gonna come to practice, they're gonna all be there. Our, our championship Bronco team. Bronco. We have, we had a total of- We had a total of 12 Broncos. These are 11 and 12 years. Don't hide your face. The Bronco, the Bronco team was undefeated. And one more. We got one more group. That would be, we have one more team. We have one more team. We have one more, one more championship team. And that championship team was the pony, was our pony. These are 13, 14, 15-year-olds. These guys lost one game. And I mean, they lost the first game, and after that, they ran through the division. And I mean, they put it on them. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the Salt Village Champion Chiefs.
All right. And before we conclude this portion, may I ask all of the family, the parents, family and friends who's out today supporting our young people, please stand. We thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Know that we will be having a banquet for them coming soon. And that's when the village will be providing each one of those youngsters a nice gift from the village. Now, I want to quickly go through the rest of my report so that we can... So that we can complete the rest of our meeting. Corn and Dog Close is scheduled for August the sixteenth. Please let the director of the library know that it is the sixteenth, not the twenty-third. Uh, National Night Out is August the fifth. The Mayor's Office of Special Events will be hosting its very first meeting July sixteenth at four o'clock PM. If you did not sign a volunteer sheet, don't worry about it. You can still come to that meeting, and you can still participate. You can still volunteer, and I'm looking forward to it. Is, uh, Gary Holcomb still here? Gary Holcomb left, but talk about residents, citizens, who have pride in their community. He looked at the flag that's out on the platform, and he said, "Oh, no, no, no." So he gave me a flag today. Sir, one can get the flag. So that it can be... You and your staff will be hanging it. Please put up this new flag so that we don't have concerned residents expending time, energy, and money to get us a new flag. Thank you, though, to Mr. Gary Holcomb. And with... Oh, one last one. Um, Chief Barrett, can you stand? Please stand real quick. Thank you. Please, everybody, stand and join me as I, as we applaud him. He was very instrumental in giving us not one, but two new ambulances. And they were purchased two for one. And they were purchased with no funds from the village. We are a part of a program that provides reimbursement to municipalities who utilize their ambulances and their EMT services to provide emergency supports for those individuals who's on Medicaid. So we get Medicaid funding for each instance that they help one of you, one of us get to where we need for the supports and services that we need. We applaud you, sir. Thank you. Okay, that being said, now we're going to go back to Presentation of Ordinances and Resolutions, item number five. May I have a motion to approve an ordinance to support the extension of the current Class B for target metal blanket? It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Jones. I plead any questions, debate, discussion? Jones? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes. Motion carries. I think I'm supposed to do this, too. I haven't done this all right. Thank you. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section Five, compensation slash employee travel and reimbursement in the Salt Village, um, for the 2017 Employee Handbook for the Village of Salt Village, Cook County, Illinois? May I have a motion? It's been, I'm sorry, it's been moved by Trustee Sapp. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Burns, um, to approve the motion to amend the employee handbook. Any questions, debate, concerns? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
No. That motion fails. Moving on to number C. Not number C, but you know, letter C. May I have a motion to approve an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery store occupation tax for the Village of Salt Village? It's been moved by Trustee Burns. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Sapp. Any questions, comments, debate? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns.
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
No. Motion fails. May I have a motion to approve a resolution approving travel expenses for all staff? May I have a motion? It's been moved by Trustee Sapp. May I have a second? May I have a second going once? I have a second. Trustee Burns seconded. Uh, questions, comments, debate? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
No. Motion fails. I guess we will not be going to IML this year, so you guys can clear your calendars. I have a, may I have a motion for reconsideration? And we don't do reconsiderations often. I don't know. But reconsideration of a motion to approve a resolution amending the designation of an authorized agent to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for the Village of Salt Village, Cook County, Illinois? It's been moved by Trustee Burns. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Sapp. Any questions, comments, or debate? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson.
No.
Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
No. That motion fails as well. Know that that means that individuals who have retired and nor who left the village will not have access to their retirement funds. That's what that means. Excuse me. I just wanted you to be clear. The motions aren't necessary. If so, let's make them internal. Let's move on to number six, which is new business. And the first one is financial matters. May I have a motion to approve transfers, payroll, and accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of $618,303.88? May I have that motion? It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Burns to approve that mo, to make that motion. Any questions, debate? Discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Uh, we're moving on to Six B, petitions, agreements, and action items. May I have a motion to approve the financial policy and procedural manual? It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Burns. Any questions, debate, comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Number seven. What we're doing on number seven is slightly different from what we are accustomed to be... Did I miss one? Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. May I have a motion to approve American Legal Publishing for the purpose of recodification, not to exceed the budgeted amount of $4,000? It's been moved by Trustee Johnson. May I have a second? It's been seconded by Trustee Burns. Any questions, any unrest?
Yes, one question, Mayor. Uh, this is to the clerk. This is part of our 2022 budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, seeing that there are no other questions, please call the row.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Jones. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Sapp. Trustee Sterling.
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries as well, so we're gonna finally get our ordinances recodified. Number seven, as I was saying, is something that we've not done, but it's a very good practice, and so we will be doing this going forth as well. And that is, when for whatever reason we find that we have to take a consensus vote because it wasn't brought to the floor at a regular board meeting, then sometimes we have to take a consensus vote. Normally, we've not been placing it on the agenda. I've asked that it be placed on the agenda so that you would know, total transparency, that when we do not take the vote in front of you at the public meeting right now, when we have to go behind closed doors and do it, we want you to know what we've done. We will not go through each one of them individually. However, if you have your agendas with you, I can tell you that each one of these items passed, except for one, uh, one point, and that is Seven D. And that was the motion to approve the ordinance for the conveyance of the real property with Southland Development Authority. Even though it passed, it was withdrawn from consideration because the ordinance was never reviewed by the board or the village attorneys. So it would not have been proper to do so. Number E. That motion passed unanimously as well. Then, we took a second consensus vote by email, and those items are listed there. One was for the Axon Body Cameras for the Police Department. The other one, which failed again today, was to designate an authorized agent for IMRF funds, which are benefits for employees. We asked that they reconsidered a motion to authorize an extended line of credit with Old National Bank. That motion also failed. Okay? Do you guys understand what we just did? Okay? Let's move on. We're going with the reports of officers. I've given my report and haven't thought of anything else that I've forgotten to say. So now we'll move to the village clerk, every way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that, um, the Soft Talk will be released tomorrow. I tried to get it out today, but we have some last-minute entries, and I don't want to rush it because it's one time a month that we do try to provide information to the public. There will be copies in the village hallway tomorrow afternoon, at the village library, on my Facebook page, probably on, uh, the Mayor's Soft Coach E-News page. And hopefully, after we meet with the IT department, the website department tomorrow, hopefully, we will be having a website up and running very soon where you will begin to get agendas, minutes, ordinances, resolutions, and other things online, again, Soft Talk, newsletter, things like that. Because what we're lacking most in Salt Village, in my opinion, is communication. Without communication, you don't have collaboration. So we are working really hard to get the communication going again so everybody has the same understanding. And that's part of the problem with the village stickers. Um, people are still telling me they didn't know, uh, that the truck stickers, unfortunately, we did not order enough truck stickers. So those who have, drive a truck have not been able to obtain village stickers. However, they will be able to get them within about three to four weeks. And I have asked the front desk to take the applications. At this time, if you come in and you fill in an, fill out an application, I will contact all the truck owners when the stickers come in. There will be no fines, there will be no fees, and there will be no tickets. The police department is already aware not to ticket any truck owners until the truck stickers have come in. And I have been able to contact everyone and give them time to obtain their truck stickers. We apologize for the delay, but know that nobody should get a ticket because of our, our fault. That should not happen. And as Madam Mayor said earlier, if there's a sign that says you have until July first to, to display them, I need to know where that sign is. Because the understanding is, they must be purchased and displayed by 12:59. I'm, uh, yeah, that night, 11:59, that night. Because the minute the clock turns to July first, they are late. And that has been, the ordinance has been in place for quite some time. And also, another blood drive. You know, we do our blood drives hopefully on a quarterly basis. The next blood drive is July seventeenth at, um, the library. This time, it's on a Thursday because our Saturdays have not been getting a lot of, uh, people to show up. So it's a Thursday afternoon from ten to two, and it's on July seventeenth. And I can only beg, plead, send a carrier pitcher, whatever I need to do. I need donors. We need to make our goal. I don't want Versity to stop coming to Salt Village because the best thing about Versity Blood Center is the blood that they collect stays in the community. It doesn't go to other communities, um, other states. It stays local. So if you can't donate blood, because many people cannot, I'm asking that you find someone that can do it for you. Get two or three people. Get five people. Have them come to the library on July seventeenth from ten to two. Have them call me for an appointment. This means a lot to me because it saved my husband's life. So if anybody can tell you how much it means to donate blood, I can. And also, the baseball team. Fantastic, fantastic. As a baseball mom, it made me feel so good because I've been in that mom's position a lot. Okay? So I applaud the parents that take the time, the team, the coaches, and most importantly, for the kids to put that much effort into it and continue it to come into these championship teams is just remarkable. And in, in the vein of all this wonderful stuff that happened tonight, if you look at the Soft Talk when it comes out tomorrow, there's actually, the Girl Scouts are trying to come back to Salt Village. As a thirteen-year Girl Scout leader, I can only tell you what it meant to me and my child and her friends to be in the Girl Scout Association. If you have a young girl aged five and up, okay? It, it, to be a leader for them is, is, is heartwarming. To have someone take the time to do for the girls what the coaches did to the boys is heartwarming. Anybody interested in becoming a Girl Scout leader, please contact me. Go to Rosie at the library, the director. She's the one that's, uh, actually starting this initiative, and it will be in the Soft Talk when it's released tomorrow. And the accounts payable and the consensus was back on the agenda tonight. We did print out the consensus because it is part of public record, and it will be on the website when the website comes up. And finally, I, I can't say enough about Commander Evans. I've known him since I've been in the village. He's, uh, such a respectable, honorable, um, person, let alone, um, officer and commander, that, um, we will miss him very much. And I just hope and pray that he does have a very, very wonderful retirement. And I hope he knows from the bottom of my heart and the resonance of Salt Village how much he is appreciated for what he's done for us. And that's the last of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Moving on, uh, we have Attorney Mike McGrath with us today, representing Ferguson Murphy, Frazier and McGrath. Would you like to have the word, sir?
Briefly, Mayor, good evening to you and the board. The only update is, as far as pending litigation, as you all know, Antoklin withdrew from many of the cases. Our office has filed appearances, so there's no risk of the village being, uh, put into default. And, you know, we're defending the village on those matters. There was the one remaining case, as you recall, the, uh, the plaintiff's... There was the one remaining case, as you recall, the plaintiff's name is Fox. It was supposed to go to trial starting yesterday, uh, because there was no settlement. I got word from Attorney Kunkel today that, uh, on the date the man was set to go to trial in Coe County, uh, the plaintiff voluntarily withdrew the case. So there was no trial. Um, the plaintiff can refile within 365 days or 364 days. So we'll just have to wait and see what's going on, but, uh, that could have been done for various reasons. Either witnesses weren't available, they reevaluated their case, uh, just have to see if they refile. That ends my report.
Thank you for sharing that. And the reason I clap, and usually I'm not as demonstrative, that lawsuit was for $8 million against the village that we would have been liable for. So we can only hope that the Fox case does not utilize their 365 days to come back on us. Because even though the case was dismissed or, you know, the plaintiff withdrew, we still have attorney fees that we are incurring in spite of. But it's definitely better than $8 million. Uh, moving on, is anyone here representing Commander Evans?
I have a report that he may open. I thought maybe he could have some to read it, but I can read the report for him.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It says, "Good evening. Here's the report for tonight's ordinance between June 24, 2025 and July 8, 2025. We had 330 calls for service with five of us. On July 4, 2025, there were three calls for fire with one taken issue."
Okay, thank you. Uh, five, pardon, Chief Barrett?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and, uh, Board of Trustees. Uh, for the period of June 10 through tonight, the SOC Village Fire Department responded to 77 calls for service. Uh, we're still out there working extremely hard to make sure that our residents stay as safe as possible. As the mayor alluded to earlier, I am excited, uh, about our ambulance purchase. Uh, for those that want to see it, I did bring it tonight so that you guys can take a look at it. It's outside in the parking lot. SOC Village has not bought an ambulance in 25 years, brand new. Brand new. When we got down there, it was 19 miles on it. And so, uh, it's a lot of favor, yeah. I just want to add this, and if I'm out of place, I apologize. One thing I want to add, and it's just my background, in spite of the, uh, the chaos that you might see, God still has favor on SOC Village. Uh, it has never been seen to get two brand-new ambulances for the price of one, yet alone to get it within two months. Uh, it normally takes three years to get these ambulances, and we got them in two months. And so this is just a testament that we're moving in the right direction. And I do want to say thank you to, uh, the mayor and the board for allowing this purchase to happen. Um, it really boosted, uh, the morale, not only of our, our guys and gals at the fire department, but the community. We had children stopping by, uh, the other day just to see it because it's something new and shiny. And so we are extremely thankful and grateful to you guys, you ladies, for allowing us the opportunity to get this. Uh, again, thank you. And thank you, residents. We can't wait to... We don't want nobody to get sick, but if you get sick, we got you. All right, I almost said amen. Uh, that was wrong, I got to put my other hat back on. And so, uh, we also would like to thank everyone that came out and supported us in, uh, in an effort, uh, to bring attention to some of our local businesses, as well as to give back to our community and its residents. Uh, on July, on June 26, we had a, uh, ice cream social, and I believe that it went extremely well. Uh, we want to thank everybody that came out and got a free ice cream. Um, I think everybody had fun in spite of it being a little warm outside, but it was, it was a good time, and, uh, that was had. And so we want to, uh, thank you for coming out. Uh, and we ask that you look forward to, uh, October, the first weekend in October, uh, the Fire Prevention Week. We're gonna try to do something big again. And also to say with that, we spent no money on that ice cream social. People start blessing us and, and actually donating, uh, tons of ice cream. So, and, and, uh, that owner was able to get some recognition, and I hope you guys continue to support all our businesses here in SOC Village. Uh, in addition, and I'm, I'll be real quick, I'm sorry. In addition, I want to remind everyone of our, uh, smoke detector program that we have. And again, it's free. It costs the village no money. It costs your residents no money. And so if you need smoke detectors, no matter how big your house is, uh, no matter how many you need, if you need a smoke detector, you can receive one for free as long as you live in SOC Village. All you have to do is to reach out to us at the fire department. Our phone number is 708-758-2225. That's 708-758-2225. You can ask for myself or Battalion Chief Myers. And lastly, let's, uh, let's unite in our efforts to create a safe environment for our families, neighbors. Together, we can make a significant impact. And as always, as I say, stay safe and God bless. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and the Board of Trustees.
Say it again?
So burn camp, uh, is normally something that we do, uh, is like a boot drive for children that have been burned. Um, and normally, we do a boot camp, uh, I mean, a boot drive for it. Um, it necessarily don't have to be during the summer months. It could be at any time. And so we're just looking for a good day to start it.
I thought there was a camp that you ran during the summer.
So that's not, that's not, uh, so that's just Junior Fire Academy.
When is that?
We're not sure about that yet. Yeah. Yeah, no, we're, we're not sure about that this time.
Thank you for a very thorough report. The next report is coming from Director Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Trustees, and residents. Today was overall a good day. I was a former coach, and remind me when I coached my son playing baseball, it was a good day seeing Commander Evans getting his due recognition. As they say, getting his flowers while he's still here. But at the same time, it was disappointing. For the third time, I witnessed the trustees who have fiduciary responsibility vote down an IMRF fund that, for the first time in SOC Village history, was not afforded to the mayor. I normally don't make assumptions. So I'm gonna make assumption that it wasn't political, it wasn't personal, it was misunderstanding how this work. Although I did send a email about two weeks ago to every single trustee, this IMRF got voted down. The reason now that I'm emotional about this is because you just applauded a commander who's retiring on Friday, but Monday morning, he would not be able to get his retirement money. Let me say that again. He retired from doing his job. The village took his money, and now he can't even access it. The other reason that I'm upset, that is true. The other reason that I'm upset, two weeks ago, a young man came in here with his family, been trying to get his money since March, which is the previous administration and this current administration. Now, all I've been in my life is a black man. And the hardest thing for a black man to do is go to another black man that he don't know and ask him to talk to his significant other about why he can't get his money. So what I'm gonna do, because this is the second time that young man has approached me, the second time, we have to call the police on him because he got a rate with the mayor. He didn't know who she was, but he got a rate. So next time he asks me, "Why can't he get his money since March?", I will give him the email to all the trustees, as well as the village's phone number, because I have no answers. And maybe they have answers for me, and it can relate to him. So I wanted to say that. I think that's very disappointing when we have trustees that say they're fiduciary, but they are denying former employees and one about to retire access to their duly funds. And if those of you do not believe me, look at the form. The actual form from IMRF said, "Was this passed by the board?" That's not my form. That's not SOC Village's form. That's IIMRF form. So I'll leave it at that. Somebody mentioned about my budget review process. If you recall, I said the far-right column is the proposed budget that they presented for FY 2025. I did not make any reference to 2022. However, since that was brought up, the 2022 was the last budget that was passed. I was part of that, as I recall. But unfortunately, and I'm gonna provide clarity, that budget was not followed. And you know how I know it wasn't followed? Because in that budget, there was not a public works director. But since that time, there have been at least three public works directors. So you can't say so-and-so didn't head a budget and they followed it, but their positions in the budget that they are following did not exist. So for clarity, what I referenced in my budget review was the proposal that they provided in 2025, which is showing what they said was gonna come in and what they said was gonna go out. Now, the other problem with that is what comes in and what goes out has not been put in the county system. So we have no true record of what actually took place, as when the mayor asked me about overtime. As far as the 2021 audit, as you guys recall, I asked for assistance, like we did in 2023, but this time, instead of selling Fox, we asked for Lotte Bacharin Aiman to come in, a very well-respected, um, county firm, audit firm, a firm that some trustees was at a meeting a couple Saturdays ago. Individual entities, not SOC Village, have talked to us, knowing what we're trying to do, referenced the great job that Lotte Bacharin Aiman did to bring their audits up to date. But yet, we voted it down, which is fine, because I'm one, there's always two ways to skin a cat, so I will find a solution. But again, if you are fiduciary and you say you about to business other people financially, how are we not 110% focused on getting five years of audits caught up? Treasury reports done for the last three years? Now, that leads me to the comptroller. I've spoken with the comptroller at least three times. We, and I said this before, people forget, we have been allowed grace. The grace is gonna run out. It's not gonna run out because myself, the mayor, or the other people in the back office are not trying to comply. It's gonna run out because the board, certain people on the board is not complying with giving us assistance. You cannot get four years of audit done when you've been told one year. Three people couldn't get one year done in two years. Math is done math. So we are in talk with the comptroller. Baker Tilly has spoken with them as far as their process, what they need. One thing that was not mentioned, I will bring it up now. We also got a letter, if you guys recall, from the Department of Transportation. That audit has stalled because one of the trustees volunteered to come in and help us, along with the mayor, to look for some invoices for 2021 that the Department of Transportation was asking for. Those invoices, surprisingly, was not in the back office. So what we had to do was ask for more time to contact the vendor, which is leading to my another point, Gallagher, and ask them to send us all the invoices that they sent to the village in 2021. Then we have to contact the bank and ask for all the checks that was made out to Gallagher in 2021, because those records was not found, which mean we cannot complete the motor fuel tax, I mean, fuel audit, audit, which means they continue to hold $800,000 of our money, which lead me to the young lady who spoke about 219 potholes. We have two situations with that. The state is holding money because we're not in compliance with the audit. That's one. About four days ago, I got an email from Gallagher because I was wondering why they won't give us asphalt. Well, the reason they won't give us asphalt, they had four checks bounce between December, no, I'm sorry, November and January of last year and this year. So we are on a count hold because checks has bounced at Gallagher. So in two weeks, you will see those checks, those invoices, back on the accounts payable. Finally, I want to address the water bill. If any trustee, and I'm putting this out there so when it gets circulated on social media that we're not trying to work with no one, I'm putting it out there now, if any trustee wants to help me figure out and resolve over 18 months of water bill problem, which is interesting, it somehow started after May of 2023. And for those that know, that's a significant month. But if you're willing to help me solve this problem, volunteer, I will stay here till 7, 8 o'clock at night if you're willing to sit at the computer and figure this out. Because as I told the mayor, we have about 3,000 water bills. The highest I've seen so far is 1.9 million, which I shared with the trustees for one company. There's an email that I have. They've been trying to correct this problem since October of last year. Again, like I said when I did budget review, so many vendors, so many residents, I sent, they emailed, they called, they left a message, but nobody replied back to them. So if you want to help me figure out if it's an old meter problem, because the rumor was it's an IT problem. Well, that can't be true, because like I said in my budget review, we're about to pay about $200,000 for an IT firm that do not, that have not ever came before the board for approval, but yet you paying them about $90,000 for six months' worth of work. So it's not an IT issue, especially when you pick the IT firm that you want. It's a meter issue. It's, uh, people that didn't know how to install the meters. They install them backwards. We have at least 800 meters right now in the village that cannot get ready. So what happens when they get fixed in public works, the system, the computer system in the meter, does not know it's a new meter. So it goes back in history and reads it as if you just got that meter a year ago. So when you have a high water bill, people, people have to go in the system and make that correction before the bill come out. So again, any trustee, if you're willing, let me know daytime. Heck, I can do it after Sunday, after church, sit down with you and fix the water bill. But it cannot be an issue that the mayor, myself, public works director, get this thing fixed in less than three months, when it been 18 months probably. And, uh, I think the final thing I wanted to mention, you asked me about, um, I mentioned about the budget. Now, we talked about the contracts not getting approved, but I'm gonna ask again, and mayor, I'm gonna ask you to indulge with me, keep putting the IMRF on the agenda, and until we get a vote, until someone can articulate to me why, for the first time in SOC Village history, the mayor cannot have access to an IMRF agent, when it has nothing to do with money, doesn't cost the residents money, doesn't cost SOC Village money, it allows me, who will put money just out of my check, to be able to call that company and do what I choose to do with my own money. With that, mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Excuse me, mayor. I thank you for all of those insights that you've shared with us. I'm hoping that in your report, you were able to answer the residents' questions in terms of updates. I believe that you did. I heard you talk about the audit, comptroller office, water bill update, why the bills are high. I talked about the website, and I mentioned the June 10. I think that we answered all of that. We do have a question from a trustee, Trustee Burns. What say you?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Mr. Finch, there was a vote to...
Mr. Finch, there was a vote tonight about the tax. Please, please let the residents and ourselves know. It was voted down today, can you let us know what that means for the financial hardship that will put on our people?
So what? Again, it's like it's oxymoron. You say you want a grocery store, but now you just voted to not get the revenue from the grocery store. That's what that really entail. You're gonna bring in a business, but you're not gonna get money from that business. The governor has already said, come January, the state will not impose the sales tax on food and things like that. Come January 1st. However, there is an off-ramp that had been afforded to municipality to impose their own 1% sale tax. Typically, that's only allowed for homegrown community. But the governor has said, any community, that if you still want to get this revenue that you've been getting prior to 2026, here's a mechanism to do it. They did the form, they're trying to review it, I were trying to review it. So now, if you get this grocery store, the money from the food, on that tax on that food, won't come to South Village. That, I, I don't understand, especially, it may be, the, the thought process is, let's see how financially stoop the mayor and Mr. Finch can be. Because like I said, we'll figure out a way to skin this cat. It's not gonna be, I'm already working on a particular task because I anticipated some of this anyway. But why would you know that you are spending at least, at least a million dollars in expenses from last year? Where's the money coming from? Anybody that sees me talk about finances, I say it over and over again. Municipality cannot make stuff. I have a business, if I want to make more revenue, I go sell more products. That's how I make more money, period. Municipality gives it from the state, they get it from the county. We can't get it from the federal because we, we got a stop grant, so we can't get no grant money. And we get it from fines and fees. We just had one resident complain respectfully that he paid extra $30. So is the trustees willing to raise the rates for other things throughout the community to get more money in? So when you don't vote, it's voting against your own interest. So to answer your question, we want something, but yet, we're not gonna benefit from it. I, I just, it doesn't make sense to me. And, and we're gonna discuss the line of credit later because that's another mechanism that had been replaced since 2018. But all of a sudden, the American have access to it. The reason I say the mayor, because, let me, let me say one elephant in the room. One of the rumors that I heard that the line of credit was not voted for was because Mr. Finch was gonna steal it. That's one of the, see, but, and I, and I, I can concur with that, but I'm gonna say this. I've been accused of stealing for 23 years. There's an officer in the back room, not that trustee, not the former mayor, has ever filed a report that I stole money. Because you know why? It's called defamation. So if that trustee believe that, just file a report. Now, let me share this with the residents, and I'm sorry, mayor. I've had a shorty bond since 2018, my own shorty bond that I paid for. If you have a shorty bond and you do something wrong financially, all you have to do is fill out the form, they will prosecute me. But again, you didn't do it because if you do it, I'm suing you. That's why you didn't do it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another question. Anthony, I'm watching you, thank you. Trustee?
I know you said you wanted help, but you didn't say anything about the court. I would be more than happy to come in after church or any day, any night of the week and help you to get the, that's what it takes, you've got my support. Let me know when you're available, and I'll make myself a bed. Thank you.
Thank you for that offer, trustee Johnson.
Mayor, when you made Mr. Anthony Finch intro, you never addressed to the board how long you're gonna keep him as intro. Is it gonna be 30 days, is it gonna be appointed for 60 days?
As long as Renee Lewis was.
Not talking to you, sir. Not the mayor. Learn your place.
He did. That's okay.
So mayor, can you please answer that?
I've not decided, but when I do, definitely I'll come before the board and share that information with you.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome, you're more than welcome. Any other questions, comments? I am going to say one thing, I'm gonna piggyback on the 1% food tax because it's not just at a grocery store. It's at any facility that sells food. So you go into Walgreens and you buy something from their refrigerated area or their shelves, we would get that 1%. You go into the Dollar Tree or the Dollar Store, any place, tornado, any place in the village that sells any type of food, we would benefit from those sales. If not, then you go into those stores because you want to support your community and you don't want to go to Indiana to do it, really doesn't matter because the village will not benefit from wherever you buy your groceries. If we do not pass this, and if I'm not mistaken, we're on a timeline to get it passed. So just like I saw something else on the agenda talking about a reconsideration for another motion that had failed in the past, we will be bringing that back. But let's move on because we don't want to be, I'm sorry, I didn't see you here.
For clarification, receiving this tax is going to come to the village, correct? So what about our residents? So is the 1% tax is going to come out of the taxpayers, the residents' money? Is that coming from them or how is that?
The stores would provide that 1% to us. Now, if they do endeavor, they could pass it on, but the actual funds come from the stores.
But at any point, would it be a time where it could come back to the residents?
I can't project that, I'm sorry, okay? Let's move on, the next area? No, we can't move on because our interim Public Works Director Larry Gates has a report for us. Do you have a report? Okay, let's go.
Good evening, mayor, trustee, and residents. I'm gonna keep this extremely brief. Public Works, I'm hearing a huge concern about potholes. And as Mr. Finch addressed, potholes have been on pause because our account is frozen. So in the near future, within a week or so, we'll resume filling the potholes in the village. And they all will be addressed and you guys will see Public Works on the move. I can promise you that. So that's what's going on with the potholes. Public Works has been working to keep the village tidy and clean because it's, it's been extremely trashy for some reason. The residents, you know, they come here and complain about things, but it's like they use us as a garbage can. So we have no problem with cleaning it up, but it definitely keeps us busy. But it would help if the residents would take some, you know, respect in the community and start cleaning up theirself and help along with us. It's also, we have a program coming up with Ms. Trustee Sterling, a cleanup program. That Public Works will be working hand in hand with her. So that'll, that'll help, you know, raise some awareness. And we've also, I would like to say roughly maybe 80 to 90% of the dig sites have been completed with topsoil and grass seeds. We had a, an extremely large amount of complaints from residents for that. And we've completed a huge amount of that project. And we've also located all 28 hydrants to be replaced. The final decisions have been made. And I will be sending emails out to all the trustees and the mayor to let you know exactly which fire hydrants will be replaced. And that concludes my report as of now.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. And I do want to compliment your staff also because we got a report of some major violations and issues throughout the village where we needed immediate relief from brush, weeds, and all of that. And you guys were out there on one of the hottest days of the year with five or six big pieces of equipment and your entire staff. And you were out there and you cleaned everything up directly. We thank you and we appreciate you for that. Now, the next part of the agenda. And that's what reports and/or comments of the Board of Trustees. I am going to respectfully ask our trustees that they only give comments at this time and do not bring forth a report. Even if you have met with your committees and/or you have been reimbursed for those said committees. I'm going to ask that you do not give a report on them. And the reason why I'm asking that you not is because there is lack of readiness in terms of the actual names of the committees that I brought forward to the board in my capacity as the mayor. I made recommendations and I was, and that was back in May. That we went back and forth with that. I was told, not told, but sent an email that I just happened to see at 4:00 something this evening to say that the ordinance that was approving those standing committees had not been approved or voted on. So therefore, the items that you see on the agenda have not been according to what was reported to me. They've not been approved as stated. So until then, I'm going to ask trustees to hold up on any activities that you have planned until we can resolve the issue and we know exactly which standing committees each one of you are representing. However, you always have an opportunity to give a comment as long as the comment is not associated with the committees that are listed on today's agenda. We will discuss this matter again after it's been researched to a greater degree. But we will bring it back to committee. And hopefully, we'll have final resolution so that our trustees, who have been very eager and who have been coming up with some wonderful, wonderful ideas, what they would like to do with their committee that supports the village. But until we can come to terms with the name, the name. That's all, basically, that's all we're talking about. The description is basically the exact same description that was in the past ordinance. The only difference is the names were changed to make it more plausible. And/or, in one instance, we didn't do anything in the eight years that I was the clerk with intergovernmental. So there was no need to mention intergovernmental, we just left it with housing. And housing was moving forward. But that's neither here nor there. I'm going to ask though, that if you don't believe me, in one instance, I, the only add economic development to community development because they were so closely associated. Rather than to have a public health and safety committee and then a public services committee, I just put it as public safety. Because all of it falls really wonderfully well under public safety. We got to start thinking about when you choose to be oppositional. And just please, make it make sense for me. But go right now, I am going to ask trustee Burns, not for a housing committee report, update, or anything. Do you have a comment on anything that has taken place today that's not associated with a housing committee?
Thank you, mayor. My only question is, should we continue to schedule meetings or should we just hold off?
Everything is on hold until we have total resolution. We want everyone to be at peace and in agreement with what to come before you. I don't want any more threatened lawsuits, threatening to go to the IAG or anything along that line. And I'm not going to look at this right this minute, okay? But thank you for drawing it to my attention. Hopefully, we'll have it and it'll be readied for next Tuesday's meeting. I'm sorry, trustee Burns, please.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank our interim village administrator for breaking down all of the issues and the problems that our village is facing. And to let us know as residents and as legislators here how important it is that we listen to what's going on and that we make a decision for all of us. Because we were voted in these seats, not for ourselves. This don't have anything to do with us personally. Whether I like you or not, doesn't have anything to do with me personally. People need their retirement, we need this village to move, we need this village to operate and to have businesses to come, even to bring them here, the ones that are here. If we can't benefit, but they benefit from us and we can't benefit back, benefit back from them, what is the point? We want to encourage everyone to work together. Mr. Finch did ask that, he's even asking us to volunteer, volunteer to help fix the water bill. We're trying to help each other. And we as trustees are the only ones, it is our sole duty to pass this legislation. It is on us, not the mayor, no one, but it's on you, as the residents who put us here. To get with those ones, they, you voted in, and have a talk with them. Because this is us collectively and only you can force our hands or tell us to step down. If you don't do that, then you're gonna continue to get more of the same. You put them here, you put us here, and you handle that business because that's your business. So I want to thank Mr. Finch for all of the information. It have made me more brilliant for it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Burns. Trustee Raven Johnson, do you have anything? Thank you. Trustee Jones, do you have anything, any comments that is not associated with the committee that's listed on the agenda? Thank you. Trustee Diane Satt, what say you?
I say, good evening.
I say, good evening. I wanna thank you, Mr. Finch, for your very detailed report. And I do appreciate all the hard work that you do. And I would gladly volunteer to help you do the water bills. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Sterling?
I have no comment.
Thank you very much. Is the chairperson, Carol Coleman of the Senior Advisory Committee, still with us?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Madam Clerk, the trustees, and the residents. We have breakfast bingo every first and third Friday from eleven AM to one PM in the senior center. Come join us for free breakfast bingo, and we do give away prizes. Also, our senior fit class, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for coming and taking pictures. We have a class every Tuesday and Thursday from ten thirty to eleven thirty in the senior center. We ask everybody over fifty, come join us. We have fun. We have people that come from the city. We have people that come from Madison, all over the south suburbs. Come join us. It's a way to stay fit. And we have fun and fellowship. Third, we have game night every second and fourth Friday in the senior center from four to eight PM. Join us. Bring your games. We do have Big Whits, and we do play dominoes. But we do have Uno, and we serve a wonderful dinner for Christ that helps us with our different events. Our next senior outing will be July thirtieth. We are going to Four Winds Casino. With that, we ask that each person pays forty-five dollars. But that forty-five dollars, we will have a continental breakfast in the senior building. Then at ten o'clock, we will take a bus. That's included in your forty-five. Then when you get there, you get fifteen dollars in slot play. And you also get ten dollars for food. So we have a wonderful time once we are there. Also, our next committee meeting, we will have to reschedule it for July seventeenth in the senior center at five PM. And we welcome comments from our residents of different activities that we can do. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Chairperson, Chairperson Coleman? When I was there today, I saw, and then from time to time when I look in, I typically see, you have one gentleman that's in your midst?
Yes.
Is he with us right now? Let's applaud him.
But we do have another gentleman too. Ken. Ken comes also. So men, it's not just for women.
It's not just for women, and that's why I wanted to highlight, there are men in the class, so you will not be by yourself. Okay? Thank you very much. Moving on, Fire Police?
I'm sorry, one, thank you for reminding me. This Friday, there will not be game night. We will take it up again on July twenty-fourth, the fourth Friday of this month. We have to cancel.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that. Hopefully, those of you who usually participate in game night has taken note. May we have a report, if any, from our Fire and Police Commission Chairperson, Francine Anderson?
My report for the Police and Fire Commission consists of, we are currently working with a vendor to work with, doing testing for the fire department. We are looking for EMTs as well as paramedics. We have not finished with the dates or the contractual information that is totally completed, so we don't have an exact date. But I will get in touch with the clerk and let her know when everything is final so it can be published in the South Talk. As far as the Police Commission, we are in the process of trying to onboard. We have two slots available for the academy for August, and we were unable to get our candidates finished with the assessments needed. So we have also secured two seats for a January academy. That's in my report. Thank you.
Chairperson, can you do something for us? And that is, can you provide a list and the commission dates of the other commissioners that's within that commission, and can you give that to the village clerk? We don't have the records anymore. And so I know that there's staggering dates of expiration. And so we just need to be on it to make certain that if someone's term is expiring, that we can reissue them the oath in a timely fashion. So that would be helpful. And while you do that, get the name, address, and phone number so we can have all of that at one time. And I'm going to ask that the clerk spend a little moment with our trustees and maybe develop a sheet, almost like an emergency sheet, contact information, next of kin, hospital that they prefer, things like that. I think that that's something that we would be well served to have on hand. Thank you very much. And I was gonna say, I had no comment, but I guess that was my comment. So with that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Johnson, and it's been moved by trustee Johnson and seconded by trustee Burns. May we adjourn by common consensus? Thank you very much. Take care, everybody, and thank you for a very positive meeting.